Before we get into the agenda approval, we have a certificate of appreciation. Bill Gavin, would you like to?
Yes.
Down front?
Yeah. Roland, would you join me in center stage? I don't want to be as much on the camera as shoot us. Whereas the Lewiston Town Board takes this opportunity to extend our appreciation for the many hours Roland put into designing, planning, setting up, and testing the video recording system for the Lewiston Town Hall. And whereas it's a difficult project with many challenges, but Roland stayed the course until all technical and logistical issues were resolved. Lewiston has since been able to begin to upload Town Hall meetings for the public display on the YouTube Towns channel. With the next month, if you hear that, next month. It will begin on Lockboard Cable TV, public educational and governmental channels. And whereas the Town Lewiston Board wishes to extend the appreciation Town Hall staff for the preparation of instructional materials and the time Roland took to train those in the use of digital AV recording system. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board wishes to acknowledge and thank Roland for the time he has volunteered to record, edit, upload Town Board meetings. Until arrangements are complete with Niagara County Community College provide an intern on the digital media program to assume those responsibilities. The Lewiston Town Board recognizes Roland's volunteer service to our community with this certification of appreciation. Thank you.
Always forget the camera. Nice job, Roland.
Thank you.
Okay, so, no, thank you. Agenda approval. I have one thing to add for Chief Privet under, would be under, after Sandberg Fire Company. So it'll be under my name. Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The abstract. I move to approve that regular abstract of claims number 453 to 624 can recommend payment in the amount of $201,825.54 plus a post audit of $14,244.83.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed. Approve the minutes for the Lewiston Town Board meeting until February 25th. Approve the printed minutes from February 25th, 2019.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Department had concerns. Chief Privet?
I have something on the agenda already that you mentioned. Also, I have before you a list of equipment that I'm asking the Board to declare a surplus and it'll be disposed of as per Town policy through the option. It's like, I think, three or four pages of equipment radios and such. Also, for the Board, just for the Board's knowledge, we are doing another active shooter drill. We're doing one this Friday with Niagara Wheatfield School District. So that'll be involving a multi-agency effort as well. Also, lastly, I don't know if the Board is aware, or the public's aware, that the drug drop-off receptacle that we have at the Police Department is one of the busiest in the whole county. It's left a lot of unwired medications. So what I've decided to do in revamping our policy, what I'm going to do is make it, is change our policy slightly to include seniors that can't get out of the house, that are disabled, and those that are, that are just, can't drive anymore. What we're going to offer is a pickup. So we're going to offer that to the residents that can't make it out of the house. We'll be willing to go pick up the medication from the house so they don't get stuck with it there. They're going to have to schedule that. So it'll be a once-a-month type of thing on the 15th of every month. And I'll just put some person on, I'm just dedicated to doing that for an hour, two hours, or however long it takes, depending on what we have. But I thought that was important for the Board to know, and I'm going to be doing that, probably enacting that full, in full force by the end of the month, so that we can collect those items.
Real quick, let's move on to the west.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, or to request that the following items in the four pages as printed by the Chief are declared excess and authorized him to post say on the Auctions International.
Okay. Motion second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a chance, when you touch base with Matt Colasato, you might be a perfect guest speaker for one of the functions at the Senior Center to present the drop-off spot and the program to pick up. Carol, I'm sure Don will put that in.
Tim Masters?
Nothing.
Jackie, you're on the agenda. Bill Conroy, Deputy Supervisor?
All seven.
Okay. Matt Lanin, you're on the, who'd go? Jeff Ritter?
Uh, yes. I would like to declare our old forklift excess equipment, and I'd like to get it to the Highway Department, maybe with some monetary consideration.
How's the Highway Department feel about that?
I'm willing to take your bet.
For the, for the five hundred.
Five hundred dollars seems like a good price.
Yeah, that'd be a good price.
Okay. Make a motion to declare it.
I'd give you six.
There you go.
I may sell it to you.
Any specifics on the, on the forklift?
Well, we just kind of talked about it tonight. We, if you can remember the last Board meeting, we found another forklift, so we moved on it really quick. So this is excess, even though I didn't really have time to prepare, we don't have the year and the date of the forklift.
We'll make a model. You have that?
Well, how about we just make it, approve the sale of the forklift from the Sewer Department to the Highway Department, and don't make it excess.
Okay.
Do we do that?
Internal.
Internal, yeah.
I'll make, well, it shouldn't be a problem. I'll make the.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now Jeff, you are going to have to kind of details on that to give to Jackie for.
Yeah. Yep, I just wasn't prepared for it tonight until Dave brought it up. I said, you know what, now would be a good time.
Great. Dan Zano? Nothing? Drew Train?
Yes. I'd like to have a hundred, $100,000 transferred from H-97 to the Highway Equipment Line for purchase of a payloader. I have some money in there with the trade-in and a lot of lines that were all up there purchasing the payloader. Budget time, we planned on purchasing and leasing two as a buyout, and after we went through the finances, it wasn't, it didn't seem profitable for us to do that one. There's just too much of a cost. So we went and we reevaluated everything, and we figured it's better off buying one. That our two payloads were bought in 2005. One's already had a rear end replaced, one's had transmission issues. So we're looking at getting rid of the one and just keeping the one that we revamped already, and in a few years down the road, replace that one.
Supervisor, you're in for a motion.
Yeah, I spoke to Dave earlier today about it, and we talked extensively about it. I think I reached out to a couple of other Board members. I don't have any questions.
Well, for the record, we should say that he's clearly self-employed.
Absolutely. Dave and I talked earlier to make sure everything was okay.
We're for approval to use $100,000 from H-97 for the purpose of purchasing the payload.
Second. Motion second. And the only thing I wanted to mention is, I know I talked with Dave about it, we talked with the attorneys, that for next year's budget, he's going to try and include some type of vehicle replacement, because our fleet, as we went over today.
Yeah, we and Jackie went over that. Equipment and their dates, years, and approximate cost of everything. And as we go, it's going to be another year. Over the past few years, I've still run some equipment that's in the seventies, and some in the nineties.
Is this for new day?
This is for new.
Do you think they'll go off the bit, or?
I'm going to purchase it off Sourcewell. It's, it's in the state bank.
So we have motion second. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else? Mike Dashenow? Nothing? Mr. Magg, anything? Okay. Then moving on. Mike Dax.
Couple more budget revisions. First one is to move, excuse me, $19 to the Supervisor Admin Allocation Budget from the Supervisor Personnel Service Budget.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The second request is to move $5,971 to the Budget Office Admin Allocation Budget from the Junior Accountant Personnel Service Budget.
So move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is requested to move $203 to the Recreation Ice Cream Contractual Budget from the Recreation Ice Cream Personnel Service Budget.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is requested to move $684 to the Park's Contractual Budget from the Park's Equipment Budget.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is requested to move a total of $2,835 to the B Fund Unemployment Budget from the B Fund Contingency Budget.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
We have motion second.
Discussion?
Yep.
Is this from someone going off on account purposes?
That's from somebody collecting unemployment.
Oh, unemployment.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, the request is to move a total of $56 to the Highway Workers' Comp Budget from the Highway General Repair Contractual Budget.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. All in favors?
Aye.
And the last one is requested to move $165 to the Water Department Workers' Compensation Budget from the Water Department Administrative.
So move. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Riverfront Park. So the last we left, we all received this report from GHD, and everybody had the time to look over the report. Bob, you want to touch base on the report?
Sure. What I would, what I would offer, who was ingeniously tactically locked in from our office, she's an environmental scientist with many, many years of experience and many, many projects under her belt. So she'd be in a far better position as the author of the report to give you a brief overview of the report, and then answer any questions that the Board may have.
Okay. Adam, please stand up at least if you have the microphone, whichever.
No, I'm good. I think you can probably hear me. I've never been accused of being quiet. So just to give you a summary of what we did, GHD had been provided a copy of the Prebble Associates Report dated November 1st, 1978. And we did review that report prior to initiating any of our sampling programs. In the report, they summarize how back in the late seventies, two samples had been collected from the intake slash outfall pipes. One sample from, from each pipe. Those samples were analyzed for metals and for a test called total halogenated organics. That total halogenated organics test had a stipulation where if there was anything that was detected greater than one part per billion, they would then have to do some additional sampling to speciate and see exactly what exactly was, was contributing to that. That one part per billion is not a, was not at that time, nor is it now, a regulatory guideline. It's just a, it was kind of an arbitrary number. Put that in perspective, if you were to take a sample of your drinking water now, you would likely have greater than one part per billion total halogenated organics due to chlorine, disinfection, and fluorination of your water. So that just kind of puts that in, like I said, some perspective for you. The supplemental testing of those samples revealed PCBs at concentrations of 2.1 and 2.6 part per million, as well as lindane at concentrations of .08 and .14 part per million. By comparison, current criteria for those same compounds, PCBs, one part per million, lindane is 1.3 part per million. So if we were to compare directly with today's concentrations, lindane would be well below, the PCBs would be slightly above the current recommended soil cleanup criteria. Now, there's also been, I've heard, you know, just in some of the conversations, there's been talk of hazardous waste. Hazardous waste is a very specific definition. You either have to have a chemical, a chemical product that is disstartive, that is a waste, a byproduct from a specific manufacturing procedure, or it has to be toxic for certain compounds above certain thresholds. For PCBs in New York State to be considered hazardous, the number is 50 part per million. So that's 25 times greater than what we have, than what they saw back in 1978. For lindane, the concentration would be 10 part per million. So again, 50 to 100 times what the concentrations were back in the seventies that they found in those two alcohol pipes. So, you know, as I say, the word hazardous waste has been used. This is by no means hazardous. It was not hazardous then, it is not hazardous now. The other, the other compounds that they had in the samples were metals, and, you know, those had varying concentrations. So, and again, nothing that would have been deemed hazardous, but again, there was, you know, soil chemistry there. So based on this limited knowledge that we had from this report, we didn't exactly know where the lagoons were in relation to the property. We did a representative sampling, and we selected 12 boring locations, and we set those out on a staggered grid pattern that gave us a good cross-section of the property. Samples were collected, we had a drill rig out there, a GeoCurl rig. We collected samples from ground surface down to maximum depth of about 11 feet. At each of those locations, we would take a composite sample from about half a foot to a foot below ground surface, down to, you know, down to the full depth of the boring. In most cases, it was usually the zone between one foot and eight foot below grade that was sampled and sent to the laboratory. We did those analyses, and we didn't have any detections of VOCs or, you know, other than maybe some minor background, you know, very, very low level concentrations, well little criteria, nothing for VOCs, S VOCs, metals, I'm sorry, take that back, VOCs, S VOCs, PCBs, pesticides. The only thing that we did have was primarily arsenic for the metals. Now, the, the New York State Part 375 criteria stipulate, you know, we have soil cleanup criteria, the recommendations. The key is you can leave material greater than the criteria in place, provided that the zero to two-foot contact zone, where you might have public contact with material, provided that that zero to two-foot zone meets the criteria. So again, we had arsenic at concentrations above the Part 375 standards. So we went back and we took a look at that zero to two-foot zone. We sampled those half dozen locations that we had the elevated arsenic at, and of those, only one location, location two, still exceeded the, the Part 375 criteria. At that point, we took our results, we had some discussions with the DEC, had a conversation with them, kind of made out what we had done, what we were finding. They were able to provide us some additional information from the stream disturbance permit that was issued for this work back in 1980. As part of that permit, they had design drawings of the lagoons. They also had those tied into some landmarks. They showed the wet well, which is the outfall monitoring point, which is still there on the site today, as well as the storm sewer manhole that runs through that area. And those were able to be measured off, the lagoons were being able to be measured off from those locations. We also used those locations to triangulate our sampling points, and then we laid the two drawings over one another. Our locations tied into those manholes, and when we lined everything up with the, the construction drawings from 1980, out of our 12 bore holes, two were within the lagoons. Location nine was in the east lagoon, location 10 was in the west lagoon. We took some additional samples then to ensure that we were good in that zero to two-foot contact zone. So we did 9A and 9B, well, we actually went back to the original location of nine, collected another sample from the zero to two-foot zone, as well as 9A and 9B, and then the same thing at location 10. We went back to original location 10, sampled the top two feet, as well as at 9A and 9B. Of those, we did have an exceedance of arsenic at one of the locations, and actually, it was the original location, SB9. So that would be another, another point that would have to be managed. If you have impacts within that upper two feet, the key is avoiding any public contact. So you can either put another two feet of clean material on top of it, or you could take it and use some other impervious barrier, put parking lot over the top, a roadway, a building, a concrete slab associated with a shelter or something like that. So we felt that those two spots, SB2 and then SB9, could be managed without having to do any, you know, any removal of material, managed in place, and incorporated into the design of the park. We prepared our report, provided it to the town. The town also then sent a copy to New York State DEC Region 9. DEC reviewed the report and essentially didn't have any comments. Their only comment was, you know, there's nothing out here that would, you know, cause us concern, that we would have to put it into a regulatory program. So, yeah, from that point, you know, we feel that the site is well characterized. So if you have any questions, I can answer any direct questions, and we've an opportunity to review the report.
Could you repeat that? I just fell on my tongue. Watch it on TV.
This is reported.
John, do you have any questions?
You know, we'll add some comments afterwards. Look at Rob.
Any questions?
Yeah, mine, my problem with the way the drilling was done, I'd be looking against the conservatory site. There's only two drills in the, two lagoons, I'm sorry. I'd like to see additional testing in the lagoons and the sides and in front going towards the water. Nothing was done going towards the water, as far as drainage. And that's where you're, your underground transport, or whatever it is that's there.
And I guess the other thing too, we didn't really, due to the absence of chemistry at the site, you know, you mentioned drainage and water, you know, due to the absence of chemistry, we really didn't see any, any point in looking at groundwater. It wasn't a medium of concern.
That's just my thought. I'm just, I would like to see more testing, and I still would like to see a little more testing in that area.
Any other questions? No.
I'm in complete agreement with, with Rob. On the west end, between the lagoon and the, and the water's edge, at least two, possibly three, four, and samples taken there. Whether you're following chemistry or not, over the course of, since 1980, 37 years, close to 40 years, if anything were to be leaching out, the natural flow of water in the ground would take a course of ripperizing. Coincidentally, have to be the place where people would be getting it down by the water plant. And I'd like to be able to say to the people, you know, we did all the tests. We knocked it out of the park. And that's where I stand on it. And the other thing that I'd like to see is, if the thing went back, like, five years down the road, 10 years down the road, we discovered that we hadn't done enough testing or whatever, some of the questions would be, I'd say, who are the idiots who just let this go inadequate testing? Well, this is more than adequate if we do this next series of testing. Then the next thing they might say is, who are the idiots who didn't put this through their own environmental commission or committee? And I think we should, we have an environmental committee put through there, so that we've dotted all the edges across all the keys.
Okay. Alan?
Just a quick question about protocol. You were saying that two of the borings were within the lagoons, correct?
Yes.
After you kind of did the overlay?
Yes.
And then you went back and did a two-foot sample of that. Is there any, any sense to going back and going down the full eight feet at those, or are you relying on the two-foot cover in order to justify the test?
We had already done the full, the full vertical.
Eight foot?
Yes.
I see, okay.
We'd already done the full vertical sampling at nine and 10.
I understand.
And then we went back to confirm the zero to two.
And retested the first two.
Yes.
I understand, okay. So if there were any additional testing, we'd be within, I would imagine the lagoon area would be the focus. Correct?
Yeah, would probably make the most sense, yes.
That's what I'm thinking, because if, those are the two sites where you found the arsenic.
Well, nine, we found arsenic. We also found arsenic at two. Now, and again, that's, you know, it's in the shallow zone.
I understand.
You get, it could be from anywhere.
I understand.
It could be from, you know, agricultural, you know, overspray, you know, who knows? It's been a.
And your results have said, have all been under the limits as, as you found it thus far, correct?
With the exception of those two shallow samples of two, and at nine, everything else within these three-two foot.
So those, you kind of, look at those as kind of the hot spots, at least.
Right, yeah. And, and again, when you say hot, and they're.
Fair enough.
The one location, I'm not sure.
It's all no.
It's like 17 versus 16. It's very, very, you know, very, very minor exceedances, so that's why we don't have any, you know, any concerns about managing that material undercover onsite.
Do you have any concerns with the fact that the burms are so much higher than the road next to it in the design?
Which, I'm sorry, which road?
The access road. Isn't the access road somewhat lower than the burms next to it?
That hasn't been laid out or filed design. The access road coming, you mean, the road coming in as part of the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That hasn't been designed yet.
Okay.
There was a general, there was a general concept, you know, where we can change it, we can tweak it, what Bill and I talked about, and I think everybody else would be on board, is sometime probably in April, hosting a public information at the Senior Center, if this, if our next set of testings come back. Because addressing that, Bill, real quick, do you have any other questions?
I just have one. The term bore testing is vague. How could we be more specific of what we're looking for? What we're looking for? Five more borings at a certain depth? I want to be complete. I want to make sure that this is all resolved.
Right.
It's the right thing to do. Take no action tonight except as for more testing. What should we be asking for?
And I mean, if, we can probably, I'm trying to break down, with more testing, you know, you express concerns about the area between the lagoon and the river, we can do two bore holes. We can do, you know, if, I don't know that there's any, any merit to it, because we've already tested the lagoons, but, you know, I mean.
Well, just.
I would limit it, I would say that, you know, we would do up to a maximum of say five bore holes. And, you know, we can weigh that out, and I'm not quite sure exactly how, you know, we'd probably get a proposal with the cost and ask the town.
Yeah. Well, the reason I was asking about the road, actually, the reason why I was asking about that, because you mentioned something about the runoff not really being an issue, at least in your mind, based on the chemistry that you found.
Yeah, not, not runoff. I mean, there's.
Groundwater, apologies.
There's groundwater, yeah, surface water, okay.
And maybe those are different things, and that's why you guys are the experts, because I certainly don't know the first thing about it. But the, as I'm learning, you know, I just want to make sure that the, they're both looked at in the same, in the same vein, if you will. So, and that's why I was saying, the topography of the land with the road being lesser than where the burms are now, at least where they were proposed, I was just wondering whether that was an issue for you.
Yeah, no, it's not going to be, no.
Previously, we authorized our engineered berm to hire someone to do test.
Previously, we authorized our engineered perm to hire someone to do testing. That was best. Does that resolution still hold?
His firm did the testing. GHD did the testing, correct?
Yeah, there, there was actually a couple different types of testing. There was, if you remember, several months ago, there was the Phase One A and Phase One B archaeological testing that was done by.
Morgan.
Morgan, okay?
Yes.
So that was, that was archaeological testing, that was not chemistry, if you will.
Environmental. Do we need to have a specific resolution with a amount of money to be able to do this tonight to move forward?
Well, I, I think in getting to where, I talked, I talked to Rob, I talked to John, I talked to Al, and I spoke with you. And again, I'm going to state that we, we as a board do not want to put a park on a property where it shouldn't be. I'd be the first one to say, if, if we found something down here, forget it. At least we have documentation that if future boards down the road want to do something with the property, we know, we've done the due diligence to have it to where nothing should be there. Having said that, though, I will support Rob Oriol and John and Al and Bill's decision to do more testing at the site. I talked to Bob Lanin today, we were, we talked, I think you said about like six boreings would be about fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars roughly?
In that ballpark.
Yeah, twelve to fifteen, probably. Okay, so what Bob said he would need is some recommendations on where we would do that for it.
Can I ask a question in, in lines, as I mentioned before, with my point, I mean, would it make sense to involve the DEC, the Department of Health, those types of agencies to kind of get a consensus? Because they're the experts.
We certainly signed off on DEC.
No, but I mean, where the next six should be, if we're going to talk about six to make sure that they have no plans.
How about request a plan and look at the plan before going forward?
Hold on a second, hold on a second. So.
Yeah. And let me just say one, Diane, and one of the things, too, with the agency, with the DEC, they only do as much.
Excuse me?
They only do so much to the extent that a site is in a program.
I see.
So the site does not qualify for Superfund.
Thank you.
It's not Brownfoot site, so they don't have a, their own mechanism to, you know, be fully engaged in the process. They do, you know, they'll do a courtesy review and say, nope, you know, that's it, you know, they tend to say, they're not the dirt police. So as long as we are, you know, following the guidelines and the concentrations are within, you know, you know, the appropriate ranges and, you know, slight exceedances, we're able to manage the risks on-site, and we do it according with the, according to the regulations, there's really no, you know, the agency isn't getting involved.
What, what regulation was used for the sampling?
Hold on a second, you can speak at the end, she's not going anywhere. What I guess what we could do is, we can approve GHD moving forward to do more testing, working with the board, you guys had a specific, a couple of specific locations, you wanted to see more testing in the lagoons.
The lagoons are just around the hour edge.
And then you wanted to get some more.